They're not like, they weren't doing that in our office.
Okay, but again, y'all know that, so that's why I asked the question.
Plus, I think it is late spring, it's a toner and all.
Yeah.
Whereas.
And we pay a hundred dollars a month for it.
Uh, alright, so do you think that's what we can do?
No, but the next one, uh, nineteen, fifty-one, nineteen, what?
What do we have there? Ready, ready?
We have a couple, we're getting, uh, five dollar hard out.
That's where that was.
Okay, so that's not, that's not asset to grant, okay.
No, it's not a grant, it's coming from that archive.
Okay, okay, but that's actually gonna be a lot more, ain't it?
Well, that's how, I don't know. You gotta pay other half of it.
Yeah, it'll be a lot more than that, but that's all.
I got you.
As of last.
So that's a fee, that's not a tax?
As of the last meeting of the historical committee, there is eight grand that been collected since February. Seventy-eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars for it, but that tax, it takes a long time. But again, you know, guys, have to, something's better than having nothing. Okay, alright, on the.
Now, I'm greedy, I'd rather have the whole.
Yeah, you did not go. Uh, fifty-two, one hundred, uh, going down through there, uh, anything, you'll notice that all the services there, your fifty-two hundred been brought over. The only thing I would point up to put a middle note in your mind is this, you'll notice there for rent, it's blank. If things don't go forward on the old hospital as far as the, uh, getting that thing up to code and fire and all the other things over there. And, and folks gotta get moved out, that's where we, and put the financial director.
That's a good segue.
Then you're gonna have to come up with some revenue right now.
I have a question on one oh five, it's still listing at seventy-five thousand, but we need money.
Yes, don't, don't, don't.
Why would we not budget that this year for half of that, or fifty-five?
And, and, and that, hey, whatever, y'all, fifty, fifty, number is fine.
They've only lost two months, so.
I have a budget, I have the whole office.
And then they just.
Well, that's true, but I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna charge twenty thousand more than they need on that case, I mean.
Well, it's a kinda thing, it, it.
It'll recur.
What you're saying, Corey, is absolutely correct, but let's just say you get stuff for rent, you're gonna need some extra, you need extra money.
You're right.
Yeah.
You know, I, again, we, it, it, we know we're in the ballpark, but Corey's correct, you don't start paying stuff like you've got somebody.
Right.
But at least you're on the high side, it's not coming back, so you gotta get more money.
Yes.
Get more money.
Professor.
But yeah, what do y'all wanna change it to, though, put on the table when we go in? We, we need to hold up.
Nah, that's not what we're discussing, we keep moving on, just use that good segue.
Okay, uh, uh, okay, fifty-two, three hundred, uh, line one ninety-one. Uh, the budget committee looked at that and they were being paid three hundred dollars, chairman being paid three hundred fifty dollars, Dan. Uh, basically for, uh, being on the committee and they do come one time regardless of whether it's any meetings or not, so. One meeting, they get paid flat amount, so if that one meeting had hit it, if they had a hundred meetings to hit it. So, it's just a flat fee they were getting paid, and, uh.
I'd like to, you cut it to twenty-five dollars, like, nobody was like.
Well, the only thing I was, I'm sorry, what did you say? I was just gonna say, you know, if you're looking outside, why would you ever mistake?
Yes, but you're left.
I understand, but why would we run bar? But anyway, that's where the logic came from, the budget committee voting to change it, so that's been known for this thing. Uh, assuming they have two, two, two meetings, and, uh, I can tell you that's a very low active, uh, committee.
But they didn't have to take all that money.
Well, I'm not sure what that entails, but, uh, uh, Angela did make that statement that they did come to at least one meeting to train. I don't know what that means, but she did make that statement, so they do get the three hundred dollars, you, you will obviously pay for it, because they do come in for training. But anyway, that being said, if somebody can get, you know, a one change of whatever, then, voicemail, so. I just don't want them getting paid, what we're getting paid, uh, just seems a little, little hot. And that's why I have this opinion, I would say, thank you. Uh, but not on population.
No, it isn't, it's the, no, it isn't.
Amendment, you got that right. It's amendment, but it's a referendum.
The state law, you have to pay.
So we can, we can, we can increase it. And there's actually a lot of different places.
Any comments on, uh, hey guys, we ain't got the commissioner's salary on here, we got past it. I don't know why everybody, crazy man. We already passed that part.
So county trustees' office?
Uh, county trustees' office, uh. Dan, you were gonna ask Norma about three twin, can you use the membership?
Uh, yeah, I understand, she has, she has another training, so.
Cause this is her, not ours, and, uh, and, uh, Sandy's.
She said there's a bankruptcy class that she, like.
Does, does, does that fit, what, does that be, be membership, but that'd be like tuition.
It must be a regular payment or something, that's just what she's got.
Now, give it in, but. Where, no, Russell, they paid for all of that, they took and became certified, we didn't pay them send. That's a fact.
That's for you, maybe.
No.
I would add pay a hundred fifty dollars.
I'm talking about Norma and Sandy, that, that, that very hard, that very hard designation they achieved last year. They paid for that entirely in their pocket, they didn't pay it.
Yeah, sorry about, sorry about public administration.
That's, that's regardless, like, that's your, like, they make a favor. Well, they did a favor. They did a favor because we didn't pay the dues.
That's right.
Yeah, that was a favor, as far as we didn't pay.
Yeah, but they didn't have a list of the dues.
But, okay, but.
Who's saying?
I'll say y'all are right.
They tapped, Brittany tapped, is who we went through the training with. The co-convention is the one that we got, that he let us go to, and we had not paid our dues.
That's correct.
But he did let us go, so that we could, so that we could attend the classes, so that we could get the grades for the training.
Did she guess or wanted to?
Thank you, thank you. Apologize for your own.
No, that's fine.
No, it's fine, it's hard work.
So are you saying you don't wanna put them dues in there?
Well, I just said, no, Sandy, well, the only reason why I have a question, Sandy was a five sixty and Norma's a six sixty, that's the only one.
Her six sixty.
She go to the bankruptcy. The code fees are five forty one. But now we're five sixty. Are they five sixty?
Okay, and the bankruptcy advice is, uh, any further than that? So are we gonna talk about that, uh, to get her some knowledge on?
I don't think it's a hundred dollars, that's the question, question. No, it's a question of, you know, everybody, because if you pay dues or warrant or restrictions, you should do it.
Agreed.
And I know we got another bunch of changes.
So, the only other change is that seven nineteen, right, and that's, that's her, but now, she don't have.
She don't have, she don't have her student.
So that, that's, that's an actual new cost.
That is correct. She don't have access to, and that is correct, she don't have access to any restricted funds, it's being held, so therefore, they are.
Like, can it start with Windows seven? And there are.
Guys, I, I hate to back you up, you got my decision, it's huge, it's huge. Very.
I agree with you.
I am also, I am.
Okay, so Dan, you get the, stay six sixty.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we saying that her budget's set?
No, I'm just going through it, y'all, y'all, I'll return.
I'm gonna wait, what decision's the board need to have on the budget?
Well, you're paying. Alright, uh, fifty-two, five hundred, county clerk, any question?
Uh.
Fifty-two, five hundred, uh, on the twenty-five thousand driver's license, kiosk, that is brand new bunnies, you got the email from Lana, uh, the other day, which I, I guess, Lana, it sort of fell out of the sky, getting a phone call or something, an email or something that identified. And he's speaking instead of me.
It's, um, not actually a kiosk, it's, it's something that, um, one of our, one of our people will, will probably have to have it. I, I'm hoping to have it in the grand facade, like, where we work in our office. Um, I went and viewed Wilson County yesterday to see, and I think we'll have enough room in there, but, um. I mean, we'll get four dollars per driver's license, we'll be able to renew gun permits. And, um, from what I understand, Wilson County, Putnam County, um, Warren County, all has a two and a half to four hour wait because of that new.
Or some gun store.
And so, I mean, I feel like we'll make the money back with the fees.
You also get thirty dollars per passport, too.
Well, we get thirty-five dollars per passport, the thing is, is because of nine eleven and because of security, the people that, that did that, they got their passport and their driver's licenses at the same place. So now you can't do that, because the people that does driver's licenses cannot do passports at the same time. And so, I try to call districts all day today to make sure that even, because in, in Wilson County, they have two separate offices. And so, I know that the same people cannot do the same, cannot do it. I'm hoping that, just because the offices are connected, that won't be a problem.
But.
I feel like we'll do way more driver's licenses than we will passports, we just won't make a speck of a thing off of it.
Well, I think there's two things, and you correct me if I'm wrong, one, this is not for a kiosk, that twenty-five thousand dollars is a salary.
Yes, yes.
And number two.
I don't think that will be, um, I know that brands get that much money in there, but, um, I do know that they're not coming until, they're not coming for two weeks to be at our office to make sure that, you know, it's adequate. And he said it would take at least a hundred and eighty days before we can start.
Okay, is there an initial cost for the equipment, or is that free?
They provide everything that we need, all that we need is someone to, to actually run it and the space to put it.
Free training?
So, yes, that's like, all that.
Uh, if this, this twenty-five thousand is for full-time employee?
Yeah, it will, I mean, it'll take a full-time employee.
I've got it on the wrong line, that's all I.
So, I printed the numbers and it would require six, uh, two hundred and fifty driver's licenses to, to, in order to pay for that employee. Is there any way that you could just do this first year and see if there, how you would do and, uh, do a cost benefit, just to see if you're really having that many people come through?
Um, they tell me at Wilson County, they do an average of twenty-five a day.
Well, what's gonna help us is we're gonna be the only county in the state that's open on chair.
No, one one. Yeah, but we're not open on those days.
True. A lot of people work, what I'm saying is, okay, I, we may, we may not be the only county.
They do twenty-five a day, and they have a driver's testing center. Then we don't have a driver's testing center, so.
This is just a renewal, right?
Yes, it's a redo, and it's not just driver's licenses, it's also gun permits.
This, this is really putting the cart before the horse, but, are you obligating, you, are there obligations being made that we're locking something in long-term?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, and, and it's a terrible thing, that you already did before you start, that's, that's just saying, here in, this thing ain't working. Just, it just isn't working, all, all the reasons, personnel, whoever it is, it just isn't working, you call the state and say, come get your equipment, we done it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, I didn't, I didn't ask him about that, so I don't know.
Well, that's the thing, you have to.
But, I mean, we can, we can talk to him about it.
It's a part-time, I mean, it takes a while to get the word out there and, you know what I'm saying?
Well, you said a hundred and eighty days?
Six.
Yeah.
Before you got in then, so, you're already, you know, plus these two that were already in, so, really, you got that in.
Because I didn't get a response that I missed the first round.
Well, the first thing that came across was the kiosk set up with about a second room, about a second.
Well, the kiosk would have been, would have been nice, but you don't get, I talked to, I talked to Jimmy in the cab, and he has a kiosk, and he has a, like, right outside his office or in his office. He does not get a fee at all, he said that he does not make one dollar off of it, and he said it really, you know, he should have, like, went the other direction, but he chose that, I guess, the same reason that, you know, y'all were talking about. But he said that, you know, messes up a lot, and he still has to, you know, he still has to make time, and he still has to help people.
So one, we, we know it's gonna be six months, one of them cut in half, and do what you're saying to get a better idea of what it will be at the end of the next fiscal year, 'cause we're looking at, right now, two months has already gone by, or years, four more months before they can even get it in here, so why would we budget a full year?
Are they gonna have to train somebody, the little, when are they gonna start the training?
Well, um, I mean, I'm sure as soon as, you know, as soon as we get the, for it. I mean, I'm not even for sure if, like, he will choose that, I mean, if, if he'll say, you know, if he says it's okay, I mean, there's, you know, he has to kind of make sure, but I feel like, from what I seen yesterday, I feel like that we have a good, you know, a good area for it.
Yeah, and, and, uh, here's my thought, and I'm just saying, it is, it is, the reason I'm not pulling, but it's in partial years. It's some more than that.
Well, it, we, next year, you're right, and that's, that's, I mean, I had made that statement, but when I looked at everything, the evening Ronnie, I said, both would come up with, when you start looking in partial years, you do get into, because next year, it's gonna be full, you're, you're gonna be full, and your wife happy, Chris.
Unless, you know, we just don't, I mean, our, because everybody in your office is always busy, you know, or, or got always busy, cause the person who's there part-time or full-time now is a baby, picking up the part-time license and then some other part-time person.
Well, I mean, it's a separation of duties, too.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I can't, I can't, you know, take in the money at the counter and then check up the day, and, I mean, everybody has to be checking each other all the time. And, you know, you can't do.
I just, you know, it's just hard to imagine, I guess, we could be a bit as busy as, like, a full-time person, uh, lying always of his licenses and stuff, you know?
You know, I get emails from you all, all the time, you know, wanting me to, like, look up stuff, or, or Grant comes over and, and, I mean, a lot of times.
She borrowed me from her office.
I did, I went. But, I mean, it's, a lot, a lot of things in our office is not just, like, you know, not doing your tax, I mean, we had a probate today that lasted over an hour.
Okay.
And I have one person on that, so, it's not just that, a building for a man, takes twenty minutes at least, most of the time. I mean, if everything was a renewal, it'd be ten seconds, but everything's not a renewal.
And also, there's beautiful.
Their losses, the law goes up.
Marriage laws.
Marriage.
Business tax, probate.
Living permit? Clear permit's every year?
Not to mention the minutes.
Yes.
That's a full-time job, so, yeah, I do this at home.
Yeah, I walk in and it's been like this right here, and a tanker horn. Well, so we just leave it like this?
Uh, I'll, I'll just make this comment, I guess, the need of twenty-five is the amount, so, actually, salary would be backpedaled to cover social security, Medicare, except, that was twenty-five, it was a maximum.
I mean, I would think, yes, I mean, I.
Like, with my way to the camera.
Yeah, so, Dan, if you wouldn't move that number over to, uh, your salaries, if that's the, that's the group.
I think it's around, we, we buy it through.
No, it's, uh. Alright, any, any other comments, question on county clerk talk? All right, moving to circuit court, fifty-three, uh, uh, one hundred. Uh, you'll note there that under the careful personnel, uh, they were asking for a position to be restored, basically, position restored based on salary, not the, you see that for the seventeen eighty number there? Uh, and so they was asking for that being restored, I believe, members of the budget committee had confirmed that, that they put it in, so that's why I put it in, uh, remembering all, and so we, it wasn't Jim, Dunnitt, or Cole, or somebody.
It was actually ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
They had, but.
Well.
I just put him money back, so.
Well, I guess that's.
Well, if you remember the other money that you're talking about, they had already all set to the side for that equipment.
It's restricted, restricted.
Yeah, I'm sorry, twenty-eight.
That, that's, that's for, well, it's full of that, and that's supposed to take care of everything, the money that had been set on the side.
Yeah, it's twenty-eight, yeah.
Well, I know, but twenty-eight plus.
That's for, that's.
Yeah, but the first, the first, the first, submitted by the rest, would have been twenty-eight. But I, I, in my proposal, I put eighty-eight.
Well, I guess that's where it came from, I, I just know the figure came from something that we agreed upon seeing, talking about itself. But anyway, that's, that's why you have to get the increase from sixty-eight fifty-eight, is the cost of the salary for.
May she be eighty-eight, two fifty-three, considering that's what it was in twenty.
Well, again, you know, what do y'all think?
Cause that gives them back everything, cause basically, what you've got, from understanding her right, she's got full-time employees working for part-time pay.
Right. And that place has gotten.
Well, she's got seven courts, too, and I mean, that makes it impossible, so.
And that gotten warrants and everything else is issued.
So it's a great, are you getting two minutes, Tony?
I, I like that.
Yeah.
That puts it back exactly like the woods.
Dan, you get that?
I got it.
Uh, we, that's get, uh, capital outlay, line seven ninety-nine, of a daydream of what the world's had, I think, y'all.
That was for the sound equipment hearing.
Oh, okay, yeah, they asked for money for updating sound equipment, it seemed like it was, uh, firm, firm.
Yeah, it was fourteen total.
You took that out.
But, yeah, they asked for it, so now you know if you'll do that. New sound system or furniture? What's wrong with, what's wrong with the sound system here?
Any of all of your own?
Um, Katrina told me that, uh, it was pretty, well, it doesn't do the, the kind of recording, it doesn't need it as far as backing up and, uh, it's not, oh, what was it?
They actually got a green flag, if I remember.
I still think that.
It doesn't, it's not, it, no, this is, this isn't, this, they have requested the kind that the state recommended, and this isn't what the state recommended at all, and it's, it's not.
Thousand dollars.
It, yeah, it wasn't what she required, recommended, uh, it was, it's, it's not electronic.
Anyway, I tell you, you all put that in?
Not good.
Okay, moving on, general sessions court, fifty-three, three hundred.
I have a question, is the restricted funds, would that cover?
On the twenty?
On her, on the, on the, yeah, sound system?
Yeah, no, I didn't look at that. No, this is for computers.
Does she have any money left after paper, I'm sorry?
Yeah, she's got, uh, general, she's general session chancery, right?
General session, not chancery.
Uh, circuit, circuit court, general session, alright, we're gonna bounce in, uh, circuit at six thousand two forty-five, the general sessions, forty-two thousand two sixty.
Well, why wouldn't we buy that out of that? But that's might not be for her office, though.
Right.
That may be the key, this is the court group and not her office. Yeah, so, that's your decision, so. I think it's a good idea to check out, and see if we can, if we can, let's go for the gusto, we'll get a camera. Uh, let's do an honest, let's right here, put a camera up there on the corner. General session, I didn't have no changes in there, Ronnie?
Uh.
We could have Katrina come and talk about the sound system that's, that is.
Do you're being charged it?
Yeah, I can ask you.
Well, you know, another thing, too, you can think about, you can, you can always do your video and the judges can be here, and you can have.
Yes.
Your prisoners all learn, they would have to read the transcript. Well, you're, you're buddy that, that's assistant man, yeah, for electronic and all fancy.
It was, it was expensive, it was.
I thought I asked Judge Milton about that, she didn't get that.
I, I mean, it's not like the courts wonder. It's a system, but I, it's a system, but it's a system, but it's.
Or a bad one.
So, that's a job that works.
Okay, can you say, remote parting to everybody?
No, no, it doesn't do it electronically, it's.
She explained it and I actually, like, studied it, and I know what it is, and I can, like, sometimes.
I need to be somebody who's here to explain.
I'll have Katrina.
I mean, somebody that has a little assist, um, stage playing.
You can assist, that's why he's. Okay, general session, no, no changes, anybody have any comments, questions?
No, except for what we might, I will actually reduce one oh two.
Uh, one oh two, that is correct, we just don't know what the dollar value is yet, but that is, should, should. It's gonna help fund it, it's helping fund.
Yeah, 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 that, that, that might go, it won't reduce her sound, it'll just help offset or, yeah, yeah, let me clarify that, but I don't wanna get in trouble with the judge.
Okay, uh, on the chancery court. Uh, line seven one nine, that is, again, coming out of reserves to cover the update on windows that's required unless we get, outdated stuff is not backed up, and no support and all the above. Uh, also, to back up to one oh six, you'll see there's a, a, an increase there from twenty-two oh two-two to twenty-three, Dan, straightening out, that is a, uh, full year salary, it's not an increase in pay, it's a full year salary versus partial. So, that's why it's a little larger, on, uh, anything on the chancery court, uh?
No, except just that, um, that fifty-one hundred also includes her minute books, and that's what she had in her capital outlay. So she's using that money to buy that scanner, which will do her minute books, and so her capital outlay goes away completely, gets paid for out of that fifty-one hundred. Which stops her from having to buy the minute books, that brings, is a painful cost, and they're mainly late.
So she'll do version one seven?
Yes.
Uh.
Let's take the time.
I'm sorry, any, any questions?
Yeah, take the time, it's, it's T C R S.
Uh, it, yeah, it's the reduction from.
We reduced it.
Eight four five five down to one four nine four five eight, yes, and, and that would be, you'll notice that just about across the board in all, all departments, good question. Uh, any other question on chancery court, uh, juvenile, no, no, no changes, no need, anybody got any questions?
No, one of, uh.
Reduced line thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen went up to twelve hundred.
No, it's lowered to twelve, it was not saying one hundred, maybe six dollars, twelve.
Oh, and it got lowered to twelve, yeah, yeah, that's right, I remember that.
But, 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 oh, it's contract, I mean, we, we know it locked in, that, that's, uh, twelve hundred, four in line versus a three fifty?
Well, her bu, what was budgeted last year was nineteen hundred and eighty, so.
So actually, cut her one hundred and seventy.
So actually, you cut it.
Okay, but my goodness, there's still a huge dues to a three hundred and fifty dollars.
But it's just, that's, when kids, they have, since kids, fifteen, and they don't always know.
Understand, that makes sense.
It's contract to who, though?
Rutherford Kelly, is that what we go to?
Yeah.
Okay, if it's so important, figure out.
Yes, that's what it's like, it might be good this year, might be bad this year.
Except by some of that, if they got, you know.
They're not adding, yeah, but it goes back to the court system.
A lot of them, yeah.
Kansas going in most time.
Maybe it won't be greater than COVID, I think it was due in two different ways, personally.
Well, twelve hundred, maybe two, four, seven, actually.
Uh, four hundred and ninety dollars. I mean, lady is fine, and if, if she come back, when she has.
Y'all like those, no?
What is the amount?
It was seventeen, and then it was three fifty.
It's been three fifty.
I have the figure.
Well, I know this.
I'd say just lady.
We're, it's nine and a half.
I'd say, please, let that.
I mean, yeah, a month's debt is pretty close.
What, you wanna do a passing?
Please just.
Lady, let's just.
All right, lady, consensus, any other question on juvenile, uh, judicial commissioners? Uh. I already explained that, didn't I, or did, did, was I?
Well, she asked for thirty-six thousand.
I understand, but it raises.
And that's, that's three people, that thirteen thousand dollars, no, I'm sorry. No, hard that much, that'd be thirteen thousand, uh, or, yeah, be twelve thousand, oh. They haven't had a rate, and I mean, they're on call twenty-four seven, seven days a week. I mean, literally, they haven't phoned it in, also, I think they're here traveling, was it travel or communication?
Did you have it cut out?
Yeah, I didn't check it out, they need new phones.
They need new phones, I mean, they're on, they're using flip phones.
She actually had money left over last year to buy, like, her company would have, to get this whole issue straightened out with Verizon, so that's why we're.
Yeah, Verizon's not wanna do these flip phones anymore, so I mean, literally, the jail calls them in the middle of the night and says, hey, I got somebody down here, you can sign a warrant.
The jail will, the, the, this, that, should.
This, I'm sorry, and so they come down there at two A M. in the morning, sign a warrant, and I mean, they're making two hundred dollars a week to do that.
And, 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 yeah, on, on the, on the salary raises, except for what was involved in that, again, running. And, 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 on, on the, on the salary raises, etc., what was involved in that, again, running the hat, the logic was, unless they, they were, it would just keep it running. On, on the phones and so forth, I took it out, but y'all, y'all, y'all tell what, what makes sense on that.
I make phones, and, and, because they're not, I mean, they gotta sit at home the whole.